I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Witt.
Thank you Chairman Wingate. We just want to take this opportunity, as you all know, we've hired MGT Consulting Group to do our facilities assessment and growth study and the end product will be a 10-year plan. Just wanted to give an update. We have them under contract. We had our first initiation meeting kickoff with several of the central office staff. So just wanted to update the board on what's been done and an update on where we are and what our future plans are. With that, I'll turn it over to Rebecca Afshar with MGT.
So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing for me to help you understand where we are at with the master plan and our thoughts and our experiences that we've had doing master plans in different communities around the country and our experiences. So thank you so much for allowing for me to present and work with you today. And then now I have a PowerPoint. Do I just hit the red button? Oh, very good. All right. Thank you. So as we're going to discuss things today, we're going to discuss our team, how we came to formulate our team and to provide you with the best experience possible and components that make up our master plan, assessment scores, how we assess the schools, which might be a little bit different from our point of view because we do really try to make the students first and the academic experience the priority of the school district and helping us to develop our priority needs and how we engage the community and to help support a master plan and to help with that long-term vision and how we do this through data. We develop enrollment projections, what drives our master plans, which is data-driven. And I just want to be consistent and how we develop master plan options and how we develop our strategic moves to support this master plan, so our next steps. So of our team, originally this proposal was developed as a facilities master plan and a capacity plan as two different proposals. This actually develops a very big sweet spot for our group. So we do kind of have it developed as two teams, but in the end you'll have one comprehensive master plan to help guide development as you go forward. Dan Schmidt, he is our director for this project. He's helping to align that the contract is in alignment, helping to make sure that everything that is requested maintains its course. We do have a person that specializes in community engagement. That's important because that's why schools are supported by the community. Myself, Rebecca Afshar and Nathan Anderson, architecture background as well as engineering background specialists that can go through the buildings to be able to look at truly the bricks and mortar of a building. And data management, Linda Fender. So this is the facility master plan component or team. And then we have the team capacity and growth, okay? So this is really looking at it through an educational lens. Again, Dan Schmidt has our experience as the director managing the project, but now we bring in the education specialist. We have Portia Bates and myself. Not only do I have an architecture background, but I also have over 10 years of experience teaching and been working in an academic environment. So that is why I fall into two different categories. And helping with understanding the students, right? It's helping to provide inspiring areas of pride for students to help them to be the best that they can be. So help to figure out the drivers that develop that. And then there is data, again, demographic drivers, projections to help it align with the county's vision, all the factors that influence development and redevelopment of a community. Then again, Kristi Gomez is our community engagement person to help support that community informing and engaging of our thoughts of this plan. So any questions on the team at this point? Okay. Thank you. So big picture, looking at it, we have our master plan components, right? We have, and it's really created in a square, very uniform, because there's many things that influence our capital, our infrastructure that helps to support our school systems. And so of that, our educational goals, project initiation and educational review. We have been working quite attentively with your educational leadership of each departments to understand the initiatives, their visions of those departments and then so really taking the time. And then what we do is we develop the suitability guide. And this suitability guide keeps everybody in line as they're assessing buildings and educational environments so that everybody is evaluated on the same template. Along with the, we make sure to support people that are in those buildings. So we conduct internal and external interviews as well as community engagement to help support the drivers that support this master plan. And again, the data, we cannot miss that, which does include facility data, really understanding the components, whether it's the size of the space, the finishes to the space, the heating, ventilation, air conditioning of the space that help to aid in that experience for the students. I'll step away. So that's the facility assessments, demographics and utilization, really helping to study the data as far as making sure that building or spaces are used appropriately, really recognizing that our gyms, our classrooms, they're not just for after-school activities, these sort of experiences. So and you know, I've met with the regional planner to understand what the county is doing with regards to growth and rejuvenation for a community. And the plan then is to help really develop budget estimates, which then in results helps to identify priorities. So we can, and master plan strategies and gives the school district a roadmap to help understand where priorities should occur with investment into the schools. So this is a similar view or a similar slide actually, breaking it down in a little bit more detail on how we develop that process or the roadmap and how we do this. And even notice at the end of this general image, there's an arrow that points back to the beginning because once you're done in 10 years, it's always a good thing to revisit your buildings because they always continue to age. Experiences change as far as schools and understanding the demographic of your community. But again, it begins with identifying our district goals, which is a lot about the suitability guide, which we've been working through and understanding, you know, what a safe school is, communication that happens throughout the school and your budget. And we take that data and we develop qualitative and quantitative data. So qualitative data is, you know, really identifying that education specifications, educational review, programmatic priorities and community engagement and as well as taking the quantitative data, which is inventory, how many classrooms do you have? How many gyms do you have? Really kind of putting it all on a big spreadsheet really helps us to conduct an analysis in an objective manner, as well as site assessments, technology, demographic capacity and financials. Thank you. Just had to take a second to read that. And we develop themes and alternatives and we help to work on community engagement, of course, with the guidance of the school board, staff, all those that you believe would be the right people to engage and at the right time to support of the master plan. And we develop drafts and we go through different iterations of the draft to develop a facility master plan that in the end will serve as a comprehensive model to support what you have adopted, what you think is the vision going forward, as well as a true analysis of your existing overall facilities that support your whole community. And then how do we implement them? We'll help with aid in that. So as we do the assessment methodology, we do look at the building condition, site, education, adequacy and technology readiness. So as you look at this master plan, you will see those four categories break out and you will see, be able to get an evaluation of all four of them. And then we'll be able to evaluate each school based on the grade or score that is developed from that. So any questions at this point? No? Okay. And then what we use here is we use what we, it's our own customized basis software. And what it does is it helps us to take that data, those raw scores and to evaluate them to support you in your decisions. And they are used based on national standards. So RS means data to help us figure out costs for that using a facility condition index to help support us, our understanding of those buildings. And then you will begin to develop scores. So this is an example of a report. So, okay, let's see. So now this here is a very detailed description for one school alone, but in the end we've begun to get high-level scores that it makes it a little bit more comprehensive, usable data to look at from, for different needs, whether it's presenting to a community because they may not be as, say, concerned about a toilet partition and what does that look like exactly for that school. But it helps them to understand that maybe their education suitability is scoring a little bit lower, but yet the building is scoring very well or vice versa. So really we want to align all those numbers so that they, you know, align together to become the best environment for the students. This here is an example of our education suitability guide. And so I would assume that the facility assessment, you would understand that, you know, if the paint is peeling off the walls or the partitions are wearing out, that gets a grade based on facility standards. But the education suitability guide is developed based on us interviewing the different departments, your instructional leadership to understand how would we best serve Chattanooga's school district or Hamilton County's school district. So we look at environment, which is what this top line here says. And it really gives all of our assessors, our teams that come out, they'll be able to look at the guidelines as presented by your educational experts. So this here example is showing science, but we would look at, say, English or, sorry, general classrooms. We would look at FIAED and athletics. Maybe it's your health services or early childhood. Those are all significant spaces that have different requirements or space needs. And then we would give it a grade, oh, I'm sorry. Then there's a square footage assigned, what space needs you need for those different environments, where its locations are. You don't necessarily want, say, a library underneath a gym or right next to a gym. So as they're, you know, pounding basketballs against the wall, that library is, you know, maybe a quieter space or a testing space. You wouldn't want those next to one another. Yes?
So the education suitability guidelines, is that, have you all standardized that across the entire system?
Yes. We are testing it this week and, you know, there may be some modifications, but that is in place.
Let me say something real quick before you continue. Jenny, I'm glad you did that. I just want, I should have said this before we started, but I had some folks say, sometimes when we're in work sessions and it sort of feels like a more intimate meeting, make sure you turn your mic on. I'm glad you did that because folks are saying, they're having a hard time hearing us sometimes. So please, comments, questions, make sure you got your mic. Thank you. No, 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 no. No, I was just saying, make sure that mic is on so that everybody hears. Thank you. Sorry.
No, no, this is, just like you said, it's a work session and it's, it's good. It's good. So location is important. And then there's things like internal features that are truly part of a built environment that are important. We may, we will look at. So a science lab may need to have a certain amount of storage for chemicals, eye wash stations, things like that. So that, you know, that may seem obvious to assume, but by putting it in a written document, it makes all that data very real. So then when you do get those final numbers, this is a public document you can share and say, well, and all these schools were evaluated the same. So if your school was built two years ago versus 50 years ago, they're all created equally to provide, again, it's education suitability. So it's a suitable environment for your students. I have so many things I want to tell you and I'm excited to tell you, but I do want to, so sometimes I go off a little bit with the PowerPoint. But you've got some great educational leadership people on your team that I've been talking to and they're very passionate about their students and providing not only the right academic experience for your students, but the right experience for them as a young person growing up to be a sustainable adult, I don't know if that's the way to say it, for your community. So you should be very proud of that. As far as feeder patterns, we use a lot of ways to assess your schools as far as the priority or when they get evaluated. But basically the way it's going to work on your school assessments is it's based on feeder patterns as well as geographic locations. But we will be having three teams at one time through the month of, well, the end of March into all of April, even going a little bit into May, where it will be kind of like a big swoop going in because that's kind of the beauty of what we do is the fact that we've done a lot of data crunching already upfront. We've understood education suitability guides. So everybody's nodding in line and then we're able to go through and do that unified assessment to get that idea of a snapshot in time. So we understand that there may be projects coming up this summer and going forward. But now our data is very clear that at the spring of 2019, this is when this data was taken and you're able to really evaluate everything in a very clear, organized format. And this is something we've done in many school districts across the country. We just finished Guilford County Aurora School District in Colorado. We're in the middle of working in Portland, public schools. We finished Milwaukee Public Schools. So MGT has been doing this for a pretty long period of time, but I haven't been there that long. So, but we've been recognized all over the country and really have gotten a good embrace from many communities and adoptions of these master plans and bringing them forward. So, and it's more than a plan, but it's really a strategy to help with how to kind of get your arms around this project. So. So this here is a sample of capacity and what do we mean by capacity? So it's the idea of really understanding classrooms, number of classrooms versus students using them, when they're using them. So there are classrooms that you may have a student in, students in all day long and there are 25 students. But rooms like an art room or a music room, they vary, right? And how often they're used. But we do have a goal of having a 75% utilization. And along with that, we analyze rooms based more than just the piece of tape that goes across the sign, the permanent sign that says second grade. That could have maybe really be a science room and it's being overlooked or somebody with a little bit, a teacher with maybe a little bit more tenure has kind of acquired the bigger space with better windows. But we look at it based on what the building was built for because a science lab does take, well, more money to build versus a general classroom. So So, capacity considers capacity. It's utilization and how it's being used. So, we look to make sure that you have at least a 75% utilization of all your spaces to capture efficiency with those spaces, recognizing that this is overhead for schools. No. So, it's really, it's a lot of this data crunching. We counted the number of the various types of instructional spaces, like for this sample of schools. And then, this is, we multiply the number of classrooms by a student per classroom. And then, finally, it's, I'm going to read it so it's done right. It's multiplied by the resulting capacity, by the appropriate scheduling factor to arrive at the capacity score. I don't, I don't run the data. I'm not going to lie and try to tell you that. But, we've got great people in place that do and we make sure to get them that data, whether it's measuring rooms or understanding how many students are used for an art room or a science, et cetera. So, this is, this is the cool part, believe it or not. It's, it's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of schools. But, it's, what it, the beauty of this is, is it allows for a school district to take a snapshot of how their school score. Okay? So, and it looks forward. So, this was done in 2017, right? But, going forward into 2026 and where priorities might need to happen. So, here, you know, like for this Boyd right here, it, it looks like it's okay. It's in the yellow. And we, we keep it simple, red, green or yellow, because these are a lot of schools to look at and a lot of numbers. So, based on the utilization that's identified by our stakeholders, we identify where growth is occurring and where priorities are going to happen. That way, we don't have to react to any schools, but it's, we can be proactive to help support providing the, the right experience at, say, Boyd Elementary School. So, and as well as if you do have a utilization that's a little bit lower, helps you understand that. Okay? So, this is here yet further. And so, I did talk about utilization. These are their scores, right? So, maybe I should go back. So, recognizing how the school scored. And remember, it's based on the facility, it's the education suitability, technology and grounds, right? So, recognizing here that, okay, this school is probably going to need some attention. We need to provide a plan in place for that so that we're ready for 2026. So, it's a very forward-thinking. These are examples for middle school, how we break it out. So, we have K through eight schools, middle schools and high schools. And I can slow down if you like, but I think you understand, unless somebody says something. Okay? And then, we can arrange that data into all grade bands as well to understand where we might have some needs as a whole, say, for elementary schools, middle schools or high schools or the, the other schools as well. So, this is great. It just, it really does. We can basically manipulate the data, bring it down so you can get that initial look or more detailed look as, as you seem necessary. And basically, it's really made very simple. We consider an excellent 90%. So, maybe new schools are being built with a 1,200-square-foot kindergarten room, right? But, you have an older school that has a thousand-square-foot kindergarten room. That school's not going to be evaluated poorly. It still gets above a 90%. So, just so you know, our data, it's, we're not evaluating schools based on the absolutely newest school. It's really, okay, this is ideal, but we've got variance in there to help support good data. So, this is just looking at understanding enrollment projections by grade band, which, as you know, it's, these, our students keep getting older. So, it's really understanding how they're transcript, going through the schools. And then, yeah. So, then, this here helps us to understand even how to look at capacity numbers and how to calculate models. So, if you need to adjust how schools are aligning within the district, then you can help to identify where you might need support with a middle school or a high school or an elementary school by breaking it out into the different types of classrooms. And we do provide the GIS visualization models to help present that data into support. So, it's all data run to understand where needs may occur. So, our drivers and what we have found to be very successful throughout the country are really maintaining the financial or fiscal responsibility, providing district-wide program equity, making sure that the same equitable academic experience is provided throughout the county or the school district. And being able to expand on preschool opportunities so that all students have the same experience to begin school. Adjust schools with the highest needs. We make sure to identify where there are scores that are 70 or less and we put a plan in place for those. Adjust specific program needs at high schools to help provide those inspiring environments. Adjust schools with projected utilization that's over 110%. That, that makes it a bit of a challenge. And even under 70%. Some of the schools are, they're living pretty comfortably. And then, it is consistency in school size to provide the equitable academic experience across the county. And consistent in grade level alignment to, as much as possible for your schools.
Question about expansion of preschool opportunities. I wasn't aware that was part of our master plan. So, is that an example of something that would be in the master plan? Or, you all are suggesting that that be in our master plan?
I am not suggesting it, but it is an example of what could be. And we can have that discussion.
Oh, this is not specific to?
This is what we see. This is what we see across the country. So, if you do not want to provide that, I can take that out.
And I'm not saying we don't want to provide more preschool opportunities. It's just not part of our five-year strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you. And then, we develop those master planning options. We can look at school sites to understand those and what might be helpful to support it. We can help to suggest the great, the characteristics. So, oftentimes, architects will come in and they develop those, those renovations and, and great ideas and beautiful ideas. But, these are things, it's the, the function can really help to drive your needs and have to understand, making sure that those goals are achieved when helping to develop these characteristics. So, you can plan with some more sound data. So, here is an example of now how this translates into cost, right? So, we can look here at a combined score, really identify that enrollment projection. What, what, what do we need to do to provide that experience? This is what we're thinking about. And what is kind of the general theme, theme is what I want to say, of the results of your renovation or expansion to a school? And it can translate into dollars. Or, we will, we have RS Means current-day dollars that you will help to understand what you're looking at for cost. So, as you see, some of these are, we have different opportunities that may happen. And it, sometimes it's, you don't see that necessary growth or need for a school and that may not be the most efficient activity that happens on a site. So, maybe it is about repurposing that school and maybe it becomes a different financial asset for your community. And then, you know what, you have an idea of what you're dealing with, with students and helping to make sure that those students get their education elsewhere. And doing it very comprehensively and developing even that priority list as you come up with the combined scores. You have a lot of assets to, to think about with the school district. And our goal here is with the master plan is really helping you with the tool that helps you guide plans and understanding of your projects, so. And what we would do then next is, I think, here is current grade configuration that a school district might have. And we would break that out for you to, even with feeder patterns as well. And develop those plans into something that would be very easily understood by your community and how to forecast for, for your community engagement. So, as we're looking at, oh, and this one here is an option. So, we could bring multiple options to the table. And how to phase it. So, these are implementation tools on implementing your master plan. And then, you'd be able to understand your, go back and double-check your milestones, make sure that they're achieved for your community. So, now, as, this is schedule I'd like to go in and where you are all at. I've shown you a lot of examples, things you, we've done and how to understand the data and kind of where we are at today. Is that okay or any questions? Okay. So, we began our process in January with kickoff, engaging staff, your community on, on what we're doing, really taking some time to understand your community with data as well. And we've conducted an academic review, which we've, doing the suitability guide and we're actually testing that this week by going through schools. We, capacity guidelines, parameters are all in place and set and being run through to get the support of our data analysis. And as well as the suitability guide and facility assessments will be, begin this week and run through the end of April. Then, in mid-May, we will be taking a very hard, long look at that data with staff. So, going through all those detailed numbers, making sure that they, we're all checking and balancing with one another. And so, then, we would then be able to come back with you, say, this summer in July to present where we are at with the master plan, how our draft is beginning to look. And then, once we would meet with you and we'd have that understanding of our data, how the schools are all aligning, we would begin to develop a draft report. And then, in the fall, when school is back in session, when we'd have a good critical mass of families to be able to see that, we would present this in front of the community to hopefully gain their support and understanding so we can get everybody nodding and, and going forward together. So, that is, here, next steps. So, then, we would be able to have all this data, which would help support our plans. Our plans, and I talk about Hamilton Schools' plans to, to help support the, the master plan for adoption. So, any thoughts? Yes?
I was going to say, so, you know, data collection from now through May, you said data review mid-May, right?
Yes.
That's the plan. And then, a presentation of results.
Yes. What do you, yes, the presentation of results will happen this summer with the board. That's what you're talking about, yes.
Okay. Did I miss something? You thought July?
July, the draft and master plan.
Okay.
Fall 2019 would be when it would be ready.
Okay.
Right. And as it's presented to the community, please keep in mind that's a draft version. And we would want to understand any data that comes because of that. And then, we could make those adjustments and we can come back to the board and, you know, you'd see how that folds out and how we can make sure that that is the appropriate plan for Hamilton Schools.
I was going to add one thing. I think the, the community involvement or the community education side is obviously an important piece to, you know, if, if you do talk about building new schools or innovations or plans that affect a lot of families, rather than, we're trying to be as transparent and as, keep them as informed as soon as we know and as soon as is possible and keep them abreast of what our, what our plans are.
How do board members like us normally work with, with your group on the community engagement front? Or, is there a role for us in that?
Well, I think because you are present, we'd have a work session that before, we would present with the community engagement. That's an active part where you would definitely provide your input and we would, we wouldn't stop changing the plan and we would make sure that it's aligning, making sure that we've identified anything. If you are representing a district, right, with the community engagement, you would be invited to come to those community meetings. I believe we are on, on set for five different meetings. So, with your strategy and your assistant and Justin's as well, we would identify how we do that. A lot of times, what we do, it is at feeder patterns. So, at a high school. So, we would do this at a high school. So, then, those elementary and middle schools that feed that high school, support that. And because we're contracted for five, you know, maybe it would be two high schools that would host a community engagement session to, to understand that feedback. And we, we don't do feedback where it becomes kind of like a, you know, feedback this way. What we do is we have clickers and the audience will have those clickers and then, they can vote and identify that. So, you get that real live data in process of the audience. So, then, you get, it's good. It's really good because they, they know that they're heard. That data then becomes part of the report and a response, one way or the other, is heard.
We'll, we'll plan those around the two pregnancies, expecting mothers that are here. So, you mentioned five. I think one point of clarity, kind of our initial thought going in is we do one in each learning community. Because although the feeder patterns, you all know our feeder patterns aren't pure. But, that's the closest to purity. Ben did a lot of work behind the scenes. That's as close to purity as, as we could get. So, those feeder patterns are pretty tight by the high school, which would kind of make sense. That's why we kind of looked at five to try to get one in each learning community.
Awesome.
Any other questions, Ms. Afshar? Thank you very much.
Wow. Well, thank you so much. And honestly, our, our goal is to be transparent and supportive of your goals. So, any questions or comments? You know, Justin has my contact information or anybody else on our team. We, we want to support you, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is it? All right. So, we thought that the, the capital assessment component was important to, to go through as we start having some initial budget conversations. And we want to start with kind of going backwards and looking at community priorities as we kind of go through. We always start with being the fastest improving school system in the state. And I point you to future rate of 2023 and 1. to future ready 2023 and one of our strategic areas of focus is engaging the community and no more important place to engage them than in the budget process. And, and under key strategies, number three, which is about empowering the community and decision-making, you know, we, we thought it very important to get feedback around the session. So I want to make sure that everybody understands, we have currently structured some advisory councils, our parents, our students, actually had our student session last night, but our parents, our students and our teachers, we have established by learning community, we go through, our students meet all together and we've been traveling around the school. We were at Collegiate High last evening on Chattanooga State Campus, but within our parents and teachers, we do them by learning community, the executive director is very involved in facilitation of those. But we try to get continuous feedback throughout the year, what's going well, where are the opportunities that exist as we continue to shift and improve as a system. So we have those structures in place. But kind of the next layer for our budget cycle was to have some learning community listening tours and I'm kind of chuckling because I would point you to the one caffeinated superintendent at the bottom. I saw this in kind of final draft format, but when I got the printed copy just now, I noticed that somebody on the team, I'll find out who it was.
What about one bored son sitting on the?
One bored son.
On the corner.
On the corner with the video game. But we have five listening sessions, really strong turnout at each of them, 500 points of feedback that was really helpful for us to kind of go through. And we focus, just to be real clear, we focus that conversation on our five strategic areas of focus. Obviously, anytime you have a, a community session, there are different topics and areas that parents have that are specific to them. We gave everybody an opportunity through a no car to address those areas, but we really want to get feedback on our budget priorities. So I'm gonna ask Dr. Towns Edwards, the lead communications and community engagement to kind of take, take us through what was heard within the community and then I'll kind of close us out.
Great, thank you. So I'm gonna walk us through the five areas as Dr. Johnson pointed out, when we went to those listening sessions, we did ask the community to engage with us around the future-ready priorities. As we go into this budget season, we really want to be true to this concept of priority-based budgeting that Mr. Goldberg, Brent Goldberg, will talk more about as we get deeper into the budget system. But the first way to do that is to continue to organize that feedback and drill down around our focus areas. So what did we hear under accelerating student achievement? We got a lot of feedback about social and emotional learning and this included behavior support. So our community told us that they felt like we needed additional resources in the form of counselors and social workers as well as behavior specialists to help with students and helping to develop them in this non-academic area of social emotional learning. Also differentiated supports for all learners. So we wanted to be able to make sure that the community felt like we were supporting students from providing interventions for struggling readers and early literacy, supporting students with special needs, as well as at the top end of the spectrum, making sure we had enrichment opportunities for advanced learners. And then finally, there was lots of conversation about effective and aligned assessments. And when we say effective, we mean the timing, making sure that we're efficient with the time and the resources dedicated towards assessment, but also making sure the assessment is telling us something about where students are towards mastering. So for future-ready students, we heard from the community that college and career readiness was extremely important to them in the form of more advanced coursework opportunities and more opportunities for application of that learning, more real-world and work-based learning opportunities. Access, and that meant access to technology and integration of technology as well as arts opportunities, lots of conversation about transportation options for students to be able to get to all of the various school and program options that we have. And then finally, thinking about 21st century skills. They wanted to make sure that our students had critical thinking, problem solving, creativity, speaking and listening skills and that we are keeping an eye towards that. Great teachers and leaders. So we heard from the community that definitely better compensation for, for our teachers, including differentiated pay for teacher leadership roles, for example. More professional development, heard a lot of conversation about what we've introduced in the term, in the way of increased technology programs like the learning management system, like Mastery Connect, folks want more professional development support around that. More instructional support. This would look like instructional coaches to support teachers as well as more planning time. And this was particularly pointed in the elementary grades where teachers really feel squeezed in terms of planning time with the students, without student loads in the classroom. And then teacher retention and figuring out additional strategies to make sure that we keep our great teachers in our school system with us. And finally, greater culture diversity of our teacher workforce. Folks recognize that we have a very diverse student population and felt strongly that we ought to have a teaching population that reflects that as well. Engaged community. You know, in our strategic plan, we really talk a lot about early childhood education as something that the community has to work with us, what happens between zero to five, birth to five, before students get to us. So thinking about more quality pre-K opportunities and partnerships with the district and trying to improve that kindergarten readiness from that 40% metric that we've been flat at for a few years now. More strategic parent engagement. Parents really want to hear from us about the kind of opportunities that their students have available, particularly around early post-secondary opportunities and school options, as well as making sure that we're keeping an eye towards our non-English speaking parents and doing more translation of the different resources that we have. Growing our community partnerships was a big thought in terms of, you know, we've kicked off our partners in education, but making sure that we involve partners at every level, academic support as well as school events. And then trying to better understand what the school needs are and making sure that we do resource mapping so that schools know what we have available in the larger Hamilton County community to be able to support the work in whole child development. Finally, effective and efficient operations. It's no surprise that student and school safety continues to be at top of mind and so our community wanted to make sure that we continue to prioritize that. Improving facilities to create environments that are more conducive to student learning. As you just heard, the work that we'll take on in the facilities assessment will help us with some of that, the educational suitability. There were lots of feedback and comments regarding that. Transportation, as we touched on, folks want to make sure that students have access to school options outside of their base attendance zone, as well as improved efficiency around transportation. Lots of conversation about start times and making sure that we are keeping an eye towards that to create the best learning outcomes for students. And then finally, allocation of resources. And this includes personnel and non-personnel resources. Equitable distribution of those resources across the district was a comment that the, that the community made, as well as thinking through improved processes and procedures related to particularly the magnet lottery and our hardship transfer process. So that's a summary of what we heard from the community. We'll be at the end, Dr. Johnson will show the website. We're going to post the more detailed notes from every learning community meeting so the public can see that transparently. But this is kind of the high-level summary of what we heard that leads us to think about what those community priorities are. So I'll turn it over, back over to Dr. Johnson.
Yeah. So if you, if you, you know, kind of boiled it down, the investment in social emotional support for students, counselors, social workers, you know, we, so there's a hard, soft, and interestingly, I was talking to a group of the student advisory yesterday and was, was, we were talking about the, the kind of hard, soft. So the hard is you have to have a code of acceptable behavior that really is clear and concise. And really interestingly, as, as we, and I think Tucker and Tucker was there, as we talked those, to those, and they're teenagers or high school students, there were several comments in support of really being clear about what we expect. Like they, they spoke to, let's be clear about the, the consequences. But then we also talked on the other end about encouraging positive behavior and how do we really accelerate the pace of positive behavior? But the reality is, we have students that are entering with significant social emotional needs. Special education, a lot of work has gone on in the district around special education, but as we talk about inclusive settings and as we talk about supporting students, really, we heard, we hear that from the community as well as academic intervention, when you think about response to instruction intervention, knowing that our tier-one instruction that's happening in the classroom is our day-to-day, but what are we doing tier-two and tier-three for our students that are most at-risk learners? Post-secondary opportunities and advanced coursework, we've heard a lot about that. I know I've shared the number several times, but that's what the community shared. Student access to technology, and you'll see something in the formal meeting today around technology for our high schools, but continuing to support that technology. I had a very lively conversation with a group of high schoolers yesterday about what do we need to be thinking about for one-to-one implementation in the high school? And they gave some great feedback around several different areas, the arts and other innovative programming, teacher and staff compensation, professional development and instructional coaches, parent engagement resources, transportation options and capital. So if I took you to the calendar, you, you see our, our layout, it was important to get the community priorities. In the last slide, I'll have the website, we have the website up, we thought it's very important for the public. And one of the things we shared is that, you know, obviously, not many people, maybe except Tammy Baxter, I see Tammy back there, came to multiple community meeting sessions, several folks didn't. And so really haven't given the public an opportunity to see what other learning community said, we thought was really important. So we have a website that is probably live, getting ready to be live here shortly around community priorities and what we heard in the community. On the 28th, Justin will be back up with capital projects and really talking about fiscal year 20 maintenance programs. April 11th, you see a boardwork session around the federal programs and self-funded programs as well as school nutrition. One of the things I did, and I want to make sure I put a, a point to, we talk about teacher compensation, but also our staff compensation, our, our child nutrition workers and what's happening in those areas and the things we look at are also critical to us, I think, as we think about the budget cycle. April 18th, again, another work session, we'll have revenue projections from Brent. At some point within here, probably March 28th, he'll go deeper into priority-based budgeting and really what that looks like and what department heads have already begun to do in the back and forth process that, that goes on with that. But we'll have the budget projection for what we expect from a revenue construct. And then April 25th, we'll be able to propose, you know, a general purpose fund budget and then have work session discussion around that with a May 9 closure. So again, we want to be very, very open with what's there. I'm anxious to see what's on the webpage. Hopefully, the caffeinated superintendent isn't a part of that. I'm sending a side note in a subtle way, but, but definitely want to make sure that the public understands.
And the website is up with the detailed notes of each learning community.
For, for this calendar, if this is a public-facing document, which I think it is, could we add the times and the location of these meetings? I have to be at these meetings and I have been so confused about what time I'm supposed to be somewhere. And also, the May 9th meeting, is that the one that is proposed that we're moving a school board meeting? And when do we officially decide that?
So you decide that next month.
Next month, we decide if we're gonna move it.
Correct.
All right.
Unless we have some type of?
Working mothers, we work our calendars way far out.
Yes.
H C D E dot org, F Y 2020, forward slash F Y 2020.
Oh, oh, God, giant spot. Could you click over to the website? I want to see it.
I have a question while we're waiting on this website. The link that you all sent to us yesterday, Sherry sent a budget calendar out. You know what I'm talking about? Anybody get that? Okay. That has the times on it, we always meet here, right? Is that document already on the website, public? Because I know.
No.
Okay.
No, because I, actually looking at this one, I'm not sure that I have even all the bits off.
Yeah, it's all the same. I just met, just looked at my calendar. So if we could just make that document public, you don't have to reinvent the wheel because you already sent it to us. Okay.
Dr. Johnson, you decaffeinated superintendent there, buddy. Just, just a thought, under our priority, great teachers and, and leaders, I hope that y'all are, and I've mentioned this before, I think, I hope that y'all are looking at some kind of way. I'm not real sure what the, what the actual job title is, but the graduation coaches that are spread out through several high schools and those are part-time positions, I, I just think it's critical that we figure out a way to fund those positions. Those, those guys do a great job, but they need to be there all the time.
We need 19 of them. It costs us about $750,000, if we're looking at it. Joking rate. So here's, here's the reality of that. I want to make sure I put this out there transparently, we start to talk about this and we want to have a very open dialogue about it. So when we think about those college and career access or advisors, is what we're calling them, or what they're called, so they are part-time without benefits. And I actually met with one about a week and a half ago in the office and we were just talking, I was, I was asking the question, you know, how do we, how do we reduce the turnover in, in those, in those roles? And, and, you know, one of the pieces of feedback is, it's not a full-time job and unless, you know, you're in a situation where, you know, you, you have a spouse that, you know, you just want a part-time job, you know, you end up looking for a part-time, a full-time job. And so, you know, anytime you add that, you gotta add the other half of the salary, but then you have to add the benefits. And so we've got roughly 19 of them and it's about three-quarters of a million dollars to, to add it. But it is something, when we look at, and I want to be real clear about this, I think as we start to have conversation about the social emotional strand as well as counseling in general, we're not just thinking school counselors. We also have a challenge, I was at North Hamilton Elementary today and was meeting, I was, I was there to visit and do some walking, but happened to come in as a social worker, one of the social workers was getting ready to go in for her, her attendance meetings. And, and anytime I'm anywhere and there's people, people know how to tell me what they want. And so she just told me what she wanted and she said, I want some clerical help, you know? And so the feedback I gave her is, well, hey, look, the reality is, as a social worker, you know, you're, you're spending a whole lot of time chasing down absentees. And so we really got to figure out, you know, is there a way to address truancy and take that out of your element so you can actually get into social work, right? And so I, I, there's a, I think as we look at the counselor realm and the support, we gotta look at college advisors, that's on our radar, I know Justin and Marcia, we gotta look at truancy officers and social workers as well as the traditional counselor.
All right, we got any other comments, questions?
This may not be answerable at this moment. And do we have a workable just multiplier for when we hire somebody, their salary plus benefits?
When I was looking at the SRO numbers for this contract tonight, it was remarkable to me as a person in the private sector to have almost a 100% multiplier salary to benefits. They make 35, $30,000 in benefits. Private sector, I mean, we're at like a 20% add-on for taxes, salary, or taxes, benefits, retirement. Is there a number? Just, I'd love to better understand that.
Yes, there is a, ours is two parts. One is a percentage of the salary and number two is a hard dollar, a hard dollar amount. Every employee we hire, whether they, they are a $15,000 salary or a $50,000 salary, our hard dollar benefits are $10,090 right now, this year. So, and this is things like your, your, your health, your dental, your, you know, there's, there are some benefits that are just hard, fixed dollar based. And then the percent benefits are of course your FICA and your retirement and long-term disability. And it depends on whether you're classified or certified. So it could be 10.46% or it could be 14%. So, but, but, so it takes those two pieces to add to the salary. The sheriff's salaries are a little bit different because they have a bridge component, you know, they, it's not just TCRS, they have a special. You know, they, it's not just TCRS, they have a special pension.
Had a little bit to that.
It's a bridge component that makes theirs...
And it was wild to think 35,000.
And their insurances, their dependent insurance is a lot higher.
Yeah.
It's not just, if I, if I can interject, I've spoken to Sheriff Hammond about this. I had identical questions six, eight months ago. And I sat down and talked to Sheriff Hammond, and he explained that there are several criteria that are dealing with SROs, that we don't deal with teachers, or administrators, or anything else. And they're, they, they have a different, they have a professional liability insurance, that's, that's quite different. They have certain fees that we have to pay as far as their equipment. And now, what he wanted was a brand-new car. And after Dr. Johnson and I and several board members went to the, to the safety session in Nashville, we'd say, well, gosh, they don't need one that can do a high-speed 110 mile an hour chase, they can get the cast off. But the state law does require that a car be provided for them at the school when they're on duty. That's state law. So there are several, in SROs, as Christie said, there's several, there's a plethora of different additional costs for SROs that are not with our other personnel. Am I correct?
Correct.
That's interesting to better understand. I was just thinking about the potential difference in take-home pay. You know, if it was a 20%, that officer would be taken home $54,000 a year before taxes, instead of all that. But, I mean, I understand there's unions and all sorts of things.
All right. Anything else? All right, we will adjourn, get ready for a board meeting. In 18 minutes.